Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, April 6th meeting of the Lincoln City Council. I would like to invite everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with L.B. 898, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber. The order of the business of the Lincoln City Council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating name, address, and whether you are speaking in favor of or in opposition to that item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. Normally, on the second and last meeting of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, we usually have public comment, but due to the current situation and circumstances, we have postponed any public comment for the safety of our public. And we encourage you to email us any of your concerns that we can address to councilpacket@lincoln NE.gov. And if you will notice that my colleagues are very far apart from one another, we are practicing physical distancing, and as well as our individuals that are waiting in another room that would come before us and testify, we ask that they only use one of the microphones. It is to my left, which will be their right. You only use that microphone. And once you are done with your five minutes of comment, we do ask that you exit the chamber and either exit the building as well, or you can go back to the other room or the hallway to wait for any action items that you are interested in. And so Theresa, I think I will turn it over to you.
Okay. We would ask those of the general public coming forward to testify to please clearly state your name, spell your name, give your address, and sign in on the sign-in sheet lying on the podium. We ask those individuals from city staff who are testifying to please state your name, title, and the department you work for. Our first item of business is our public hearing consent agenda, items 1 through 3.
Is there anyone that would like to testify on any of these consent items, number 1 through 3? Seeing none?
All right. If not, we can vote on these items. Items 1A and B were introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
Introduced by Christensen, seconded by Washington. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7 to 0. Next, items 1C through L are our liquor applications. If someone would like to move approval or denial?
They move approval of items 1C through L.
Second. Is there a second? Seconded by Ward, introduced by Christensen. Any discussion? Yes, Richard.
Yeah. One problem with having this virus and not having our applicants come forward to speak to us is I'll miss having Don Mayhew up here in front of us, so I could have asked him quite a few questions. Yeah. He and Belinda would have been really nice to have up.
Because they have the pasta plates.
I'm glad he was spared this then.
He was spared you and I.
Well, I think you probably would have asked what's on the menu for tonight, so that's good. Any other discussion or comments about the liquor license before us? Please call the roll.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7 to 0. Item 2A was introduced by McGinnis.
So moved.
Second.
Introduced by McGinnis, seconded by Christensen. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7 to 0. Next then are our public hearing resolutions. Item 4A, Appeal of Gail Erickson of the Planning Commission's approval of Special Permit 1151B to allow for an early childhood care facility with up to 115 children on property generally located at 4717 and 4727 A Street.
Welcome, come on down, and we can have one testifier at a time over on the left, if you could please, and you can sign in after your testimony.
Sure. My name is Emily Dutter, E.M.I.L.Y., Dutter, D.U.T.T.E.R. I'm the Executive Director at the Montessori School for Young Children, 4727 A Street, Lincoln, Nebraska, 68510.
Welcome. Can you tell us a little bit about your project here?
Yes. So, the Montessori School for Young Children has hopes to expand to the property located at 4717 A Street, directly west to our existing campus. We plan to, or would like to demo, the structure that is currently there and build a new structure in its place. The facility will have two classrooms, where the main level will be for preschool students ages 3 to 6, and the bottom-level classroom will be for toddler students between the ages of 18 months and 3 years. The main-level preschool classroom will have a total of 18 students attending each day, and the toddler basement level 1 will have 12.
That's wonderful. That's exciting news to hear. And how long has your operations been in business?
So, we are a nonprofit organization. We are licensed as a childcare facility with the City of Lincoln. We have been open since 1978.
Okay. Yes.
Ms. Dutter, do you own the property now in question?
Yes, we do.
Yes, Richard.
How many students do you have, or plan to have?
So, total enrolled on the special permit application, it does state 115 children. Now, that is 115 children enrolled, but not all the children attend each day. There are some students that are enrolled for a half-day schedule, some enrolled for 3-day schedules, 4-day schedules. So, to give you an idea of what we're sitting at right now, with the new campus, we expect to only have 30 students there each day. So, between the new campus and our existing campus, there will be a total of about 70 students in attendance at the max time of the day. As far as the parking lot drop-off, we have a unique system where parents pull up to a designated spot. Thank you. Let me see here.
It's coming up.
It takes a minute.
It should be on the monitor right in front of you, too.
Perfect. Let's see, if I can point my finger, right here is the parking lot that we have been using. We have a relationship with the Seventh-day Adventist Church across the street from us. So, that's where our toddler families park and walk their child into the facility every day, and then our preschool families drive in, pull up to a designated spot, and then a teacher will come and escort the child into the building or bring a child out. So, it's a very streamlined, quick process. We've been doing that since 1985 when we moved into our existing campus. At the new campus, our toddler families will still park in our existing parking lot and walk their child over to the new campus. So, none of the toddler families will be using that new drop-off pickup lane that's there. The only families that will be using that drop-off and pickup lane are the preschool families that are enrolled at the new campus. There will be 18 students enrolled, but to give you an idea of what those student schedules are like, we have children enrolled in our before-school program. Those families that have children enrolled will be parking in our parking lot and walking their children over. If a family has a toddler and a preschool student, they'll be parking and walking both children over. So, really, we're only anticipating about 10 families using that drop-off lane at arrival and dismissal times.
Can you show us on the drawing, how do people access the driveway into the parking? Is it from A Street, or is it from 48th Street? And show us how the, I guess, the preschool, the early, from 18 months to 3, how does a parent navigate, or do they come in off of A Street or 48th Street?
For the Nate Burnett Reg Engineering, 601 Old Chaney Road. For the preschool, they'd come, it'll be a ride-in, ride-out, off of A. So, they'll come in off of A and then come right back out, heading east over to 48th Street. As far as for the toddlers, they come in, there's an existing access point just to the south here, off of 48th Street, and so that's a ride-in, ride-out. And so, the only, I think the main concern from the neighbor was traffic on A Street. And as you guys know, you know, the city is working on those three intersections, 48th and A, Connington, and 48th and?
Cutner.
Cutner. So, you know, that's all subject to change. We worked extensively with the city, with LTU, and we really thank them for just looking at this, working. The code requires stacking for four vehicles. We've got five, as Emily said. She only anticipates 10 families using this, and that's for maybe 45 minutes, an hour timing, so the actual amount of people that are going to be coming in here is very sparse, so.
Sandra?
I'd just like to clarify, just so I know exactly what's happening. When you say 10 families preschooler, 10 preschool families would be using this driveway, you're talking about 10 families of the 18 preschoolers who are in the classroom that's upstairs use this driveway. Toddlers are walked in and their parents park in the existing parking lot?
Correct, yep.
All right. I'm very familiar with Montessori drop-off procedures, just at a different location. So, I think I have it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? None? All right, Richard, oh yes.
I have one, and I don't know if it's for you or for planning, but does this meet all-access management concerns that the city has?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. One of the things is, this is a minor arterial, so we are meeting that requirement.
It's a minor arterial?
Yep.
Okay. I didn't know if you were asking for any waivers for the access management program. Seems a little close for two entrances, but if that's legal on minor?
Well, let me clarify. We will be applying for a deviation request.
Oh, there is a deviation request?
Yeah, we will be applying for one.
Okay.
So.
There are existing, there are three existing driveways right now on A Street?
There's?
Two properties?
Yeah, so here's, so on the two properties, here's the one that we're keeping, the furthest west. This one was put in illegally. That one's going to be removed, and then this one will be replaced further west. So, three will become two.
Okay. And for businesses having access driveways that close, are these two separate, totally separate lots?
Yeah, the minimum distance between driveways is 50 feet, and we're past that. The deviation request is going to be from this driveway to the intersection, based on access management. There's that minimum distance, so.
So, and at this point, you're thinking planning, or city will give you that request?
We anticipate LTU will give us that, because we're actually pushing it further away from the intersections, and it's going to be a ride-out. So, we're anticipating that they're going to be approving that.
I'd just like to see, LTU is willing to deviate, so.
Can you tell us a little bit about, what are the peak hours? What are the hours of drop-off in the morning?
For, I'll let Emily.
Okay.
So, we have four times throughout the day when children are dropped off and picked up. In the morning, the morning-only students and the full-day students are dropped off between 8:45 and 9:00. Then, the half-day students that are enrolled mornings only are picked up between 11:45 and 12:00. And then, students arriving for our afternoon-only preschool program are dropped off between 12:45 and 1:00. And then, those students and the full-day students are picked up between 3:45 and 4:00. As I mentioned before, we do have a before-school and after-school program, which a decent percentage of our students are enrolled in those programs. So, those families park in the parking lot, and they are arriving as early as 7:45 or as late as 5:30.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions? All right. Thank you very much, and I think we should have someone else wanting to testify. We ask if you're going to go back to the room, if you could exit those doors, please, to avoid, or helping us keep our physical distances.
Is there anybody else back there?
No. The applicant for the appeal is not back there, Ms. Erickson? No? Okay.
Would it be appropriate to take her application for appeal and use it as her testimony, or does, does that get disregarded?
Theresa, per Sandra's question, doesn't Ms. Erickson's testimony that she submitted, doesn't it become part of the record?
It's part of the?
Application?
Actual documentation, but not part of the minutes.
Okay. All right. That's fine.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to testify on this item? Okay.
All right. If not, we can vote on this item. It was introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
Introduced by Christensen, seconded by Washington. Any discussion? Richard?
I know why they built that illegally, that other driveway, because it's so hard to get in and out of that intersection. I've been there many a times, where you're backed up for quite a long ways. And I can see the concern. As long as the LTU is fine with this, and a deviation to their access management on what they say is a minor arterial, I'll be fine with it. I can just see that there will be times where traffic will back up on that side.
And there are times right now.
There's times where there are backed-up blocks on that street.
I don't see this changing anything.
I'm just thinking, yeah. On the other hand, this is a good use.
It's a good use, and I appreciate that they're taking three driveways and making them two, so we at least will eliminate some congestion there. And I am confident, based on the applicant's testimony here or explanation of the project, that there won't be that many cars utilizing that driveway at any pickup or drop-off time.
Any other comments? Please call the roll.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7 to 0. Next then are our public hearing ordinances, second reading. I will call item 5A, approving a contract between the city and the Lincoln Hay Market Development Corporation to operate and regulate a Saturday public market in the Hay Market area from May 2nd, 2020, through October 10th, 2020, and May 1st, 2021, through October 9th, 2021, subject to the approval of the Health Department.
Good afternoon, Dan Marvin, Urban Development. I'm here on behalf of the farmers' market. We also have Linda Hubka and Jeff Cunningham here as well. This is a pretty straightforward item with a couple of little exceptions. If you have a second, I'd like to go into it. Obviously, the start date is May 2nd. We're not sure if that's going to be the start date. There are conversations between the Law Department, Health Department, and the farmers' market on the actual process by which we would begin a farmers' market, and I don't think we have an answer for you on that today. So, in lieu of being able to know when our start date is, there is a request by the applicant to extend the end date by three weeks, which would be October 31st. We've looked at those. Those are three, obviously, they're on Saturdays. Those are football game days, but those are not home football game days, so it might be an opportunity to have a farmers' market in the fall, when we think the picture's going to be a little bit clearer in the fall, hopefully. So, that would be a request. It's not an item that you need to vote on today, so I think the Law Department, or you could work with them, to change the date from October 10th to October 31st. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Dan on this? It seems pretty straightforward. So, if they can't, for the, because of the current conditions in our community, can't have and hold a farmers' market on May 2nd, they would start on perhaps that May 9th or 16th or the 23rd, and then you want the tail end adjusted to reflect that they've started two weeks late or three weeks late and extended into October?
Yes, yes.
Could I also understand that to mean that regardless of the start date, that they would want it extended through the end of October, since we don't have any clarity on the start date?
Right. Yes, yes, council. Yes, yes, Councilwoman Washington. I think that's the way to look at it, because we don't know when we're going to begin, because those discussions between the Health Department, the system, the whole system is very fluid. We don't know what conditions we're going to be in on May second. So just by extending it to October thirty-first would give them opportunities to hold additional farmer's markets in lieu of some that could be canceled at the front end. And in conversations with the farmer's market, even if they were given the opportunity to extend, we could have an early snowfall, we could have rain, we could have all other types of environments that would lead them to not hold a farmer's market on Halloween Day, you know? So could be a great day to sell pumpkins, or who knows?
Okay, that sounds great. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to testify on this item back there? Anyone else?
Coming?
Someone is coming, all right.
Good afternoon. My name's Jeff Cunningham, the Executive Director of Lincoln Hay Market Development Corporation. This is Linda, and my twentieth year of putting in our market, we're very proud of it. We realize these are very strange times. We're asking for your consideration today to approve our contract with whatever necessary adjustments need to be made according to start date. We will gladly follow any rules, regulations placed by the state, city, or the Health Department to make sure we are in total compliance with what's required.
Well, thank you very much. It's something that I know so many people look forward to every Saturday morning. It's truly a highlight, and it's become even bigger and better.
We try to make it better every year.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Cunningham? Okay, terrific. Thank you very much for coming down. Is there anyone else back there that would like to testify on this item? No? Okay, you go on. All right.
We'll go on to item five B. Amending Lincoln Municipal Code, Chapter three point three zero, relating to restaurant occupation tax by adding a new section numbered three point three zero point one twenty, entitled Temporary Suspension of Tax to temporarily defer the remittance to the city of the occupation tax imposed upon restaurants and drinking places for a period of ninety, ninety days.
And I'd like to turn to Councilwoman Ward. I believe you introduced this, and you might have a few words to say.
I, I do, thank you, Madam Chair. So this ordinance was actually the idea and the result of several restaurant owners who contacted me since our community was changed so drastically just a few weeks ago. I'd also be remiss if I didn't acknowledge Councilman Bowers and Councilman McGinnis. I also know that they had the same idea and were talking to our Law Department before I actually asked for a draft of this ordinance. But before going into more details of what it entails, I also want to thank and acknowledge those who are taking care of us and our basic needs in the midst of this horrific pandemic, the coronavirus. This includes the mayor, my council colleagues, and all city employees, Pat Lopez, who we heard from today, and the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department, our first responders, the fire and the police departments, and all of Lincoln's healthcare employees, the food industry employees serving on the front lines, and of course, the local media. Thank you for working so closely with us and keeping us informed, sometimes on an hourly basis. So the ordinance before you today suspends the two percent occupation tax for restaurants and bar owners effective March one through June twenty-fifth, without penalty and without interest. I believe this is the least we can do for this large industry, the restaurant industry, and certainly one of Lincoln's larger employers, many of whom do business in my city council district. One restaurant on, one restaurant owner who contacted me over two weeks ago told me their business had dropped over ninety percent. That was before the dining rooms were asked to close and before restaurants were asked to serve only through takeout and delivery. Another restaurant owner told me they were already falling behind on their occupancy tax quarterly payment schedule, and they were worried about how they could possibly keep making their quarterly payments. Recently, the entire council was also contacted by a restaurant owner whose several businesses were collectively down eighty percent last week. This owner expects this number to worsen as the days of the coronavirus continue. Our restaurants in Lincoln have drastically and creatively changed their business models overnight to adapt to this pandemic. They have made really painful decisions regarding those who work for them and who depend on their paychecks. I believe this ordinance will help our small business owners. Let me tell you why. The delay of this payment of this occupation tax will help these restaurant and bar owners control their cash flow at a time when they are already trying to decide which bills to pay and how long they will be keeping their employees. I've appreciated the support of my council colleagues thus far, and I trust and hope you will all continue with your support. Thanks for the opportunity to offer this ordinance. I'll be glad to answer any questions any of you have. And our city attorney, I know Mr. Kirkpatrick, and our finance director, Brandon Kaufman, are also available to answer your questions, and I also want to thank both of them for their guidance and their help with this ordinance. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, Richard?
Thank you, Tammy. This is, will be a, a good thing to have for a while, for a little bit of cash flow. The one thing that's in here, Tammy, that I didn't know, on line three, it calls it a temporary suspension of tax. I want to make sure everybody understands, we're not suspending the tax, we're only suspending the collection of the tax. So we just need to make that clear at this point. Am I wrong on that?
No, no, that's correct. And actually, on line three, Councilman McGinnis, there was, I believe it's, yep, we added the word "collection" to help clarify that.
Okay.
So I want to be clear here, because I thought we were delaying the remittance of the tax would be collected, but not remitted to the state for, back to be, or not remitted to the city.
You're correct.
Okay, so it is not, the tax will continue to be collected?
Yes. Yes.
But the remittance of that tax to.
Delayed.
The city is delayed.
That's correct.
Without penalty.
Without penalty or interest. You're correct.
Okay.
Both of you are correct.
So the tax is going to continue to be collected?
Yes.
So there is a different ordinance that's been circulated than the one that's online?
No.
The one I have online says to temporarily suspend collection of the occupation tax imposed upon.
That's current.
Okay, the one I'm looking at says entitled temporary, it's entitled, or titled as Temporary Suspension of Tax.
So line three says suspend collection of tax. That's the one.
And that goes on to say temporarily suspend collection of the tax.
Collection meaning given to the city?
Yes. Yes.
Correct. Not received from the customer.
That's correct. They're still.
I just want to make sure that it's real clear. And we're still collecting, it's still, the tax is still being collected by the customer.
It is. It would still, if you went to take.
Or being remitted by the customer, collected by the owner.
Yeah, that doesn't change. It's still going to show up on your receipt.
Okay.
So unless Brandon or Jeff want to clarify that. That's correct. If you pick up takeout today on your way home, it's going to show up on your receipt.
So more work, talking about collection, we're talking about the city receiving.
Yes.
Correct. That's correct. We're saying the same thing.
Okay.
Benny?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question about the timing, and this is one of those little nuanced things. The quarter ends in May, March, and usually the reporting period's April, and you wanted to suspend from March to ninety days. I was wanting to, was there a reason why you didn't choose calendar quarters and you kind of broke it off in March as opposed to starting in April?
I, well, my own personal view was, and we can have either Brandon or Jeff come forward, was that the, that the timing of the virus was starting to hit in March. And so it seemed to me that made, was more fair to begin the first of the month.
If I could ask Brandon a similar question, if he would yield for a question?
But I understand, yeah, collection-wise.
Brandon Kaufman, Finance Director for the city and also Treasurer for the West Hay Market JPA. Based upon this, so right now, restaurants have already paid February, because that was due in March twenty-fifth. So this would delay the March payment. It would delay the April payment. And then the May payment would still be due on June twenty-fifth, because this suspends on June twenty-fifth.
So I was anticipating quarterly reporting by employers. They report and remit monthly?
The majority of restaurants remit on a monthly basis because they're, they're incentivized to, they get, they get to take a two percent credit if they submit on a monthly instead of a quarterly. So most of them all submit on a monthly. Restaurants are the only ones with that option. Hotel and car rentals do not have that option. They're on a quarterly.
That cleared that up for me. Thank you very much.
Um, Brandon, but if, if restaurants still want to pay on their monthly routine and still get that two percent incentive, they still can do that, if, if they're capable of doing that.
I think if they're capable and willing, and we will still accept money. Yeah.
That's good to know.
Two percent.
Okay, Richard?
One, then the two percent reduction.
Incentive, yeah.
Incentive would only be available for those that pay theirs on time, to pay on the monthly?
That is available on a monthly.
But if they wait until June to pay?
I think that would still be available to them, given that.
They still have a two percent reduction?
That we're suspending the, the required remittance of this. I think restaurants should still be able to, since there's no penalties or interest, I would think that that two percent credit would still apply to anything that they have collected but not remitted. So if they remit at June twenty-fifth, they would still get that two percent credit.
Okay. Good to get all this out, so we all know.
Good question. Any other questions for Brandon? Any other questions for Tammy? Tammy, what, what can we do in the city of Lincoln to help our restaurants continue to survive?
Well, there's Takeout Tuesday, which has been proclaimed by the governor. I think support local, at least once a week if you can, is a good thing to always do, and just help, help them stay in business as best we can until we get to the other side of this. Would be a good thing to do. So they're a big employer in the city.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to testify on this item?
I think we do have someone here.
We do. Oh, okay, terrific.
Zoe Olson, yeah.
Welcome, come on down.
Hi. I am Zoe Olson, and I'm the Executive Director of the Nebraska Restaurant Association. So we represent all the restaurants in the state of Nebraska, whether they're members or not. We are a membership organization, but right now, we're helping everybody. And I want to thank councilperson Ward, McGinnis, Bauer, everybody for thinking of us. There is no perfect solution to this for restaurants right now, but if we piece together enough things, then perhaps we can keep people in business. I apologize, I don't have numbers broken down specifically for Lincoln, but I want you to know that last year, there were ninety-six thousand nine hundred restaurant and bar workers in the state of Nebraska. That's a huge employment group. And in twenty eighteen, we did three point three billion dollars in business. So this is really important, because restaurants operate on an extremely narrow margin, much like grocery stores do. I know a little bit about that, too. But our, our restaurants are struggling right now, and they're trying really hard to stay in business so that they can come back when we're all back. They don't want to lay off their workers. Their workers are like family to them. And I just want people to remember that your restaurant owners and employees are families and their friends, their colleagues, their community members, and their visitors to this city on many, many, many occasions. And we take really good care of them. You ask what you could do? Yes. Takeout Tuesday, really important. Nationally, we do carry out Wednesday, too. So, you know, middle of the week, when you really don't want to cook at home. That's what we like. So I really appreciate this. I know our restaurant owners are appreciative of this. They're just working really hard to get things filed, trying to get those loans. That's all moving slower than we would like. But thank you for considering this, because we're hurting right now, and we want to come back, and we want to come back strong. I want to remind you that the people in the restaurant business do a lot of things for Lincoln. The Knudson family, who usually does a Easter dinner for the community, don't know what that's going to look like this year. You know, Raising Cane's, who does the coat drive every year. When the Lincoln Public Schools closed rapidly, you know, immediately, we had restaurants like Granite City and Bethany Cafe, who said, you know what, kids aren't going to have meals to eat. We'll just make meals, you just come pick them up. That's what restaurants are to this community. They're giving, they're the people who come, we go to when we want to do a fundraiser. Donna Millie's just did a right fundraiser a couple of weeks ago. There are ones where people come and say, give us gift cards for our charity. So if you want to do something, go right to that restaurant and buy a gift card. That'll give them a little bit of cash, and then when this is over, go use that gift card. So that's another thing you can do to help restaurants out and get some liquidity. I take any questions if you have them?
Nope. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much for coming. We appreciate that. Is there anyone else in the other room that would like to testify on this item? Nope. All right, we can move on.
All right, I'll call items five C and D together. They are Change of Zone One Nine Zero Three One, Application of Chateau Development LLC for a change from AG Agriculture to R3 Residential Planned Unit Development, to develop eight hundred sixty multifamily units and associated waivers on property generally located at South Forty-eighth and Yankee Hill Road, and approving the Yankee Hill Road Street Improvements Agreement between the city, Chateau, and Lincoln Federal Bank Corp. to design and construct road improvements in Yankee Hill Road between South Fortieth and South Forty-eighth Streets.
Madam Chair, members of the city council, Mark Hunsick, you're appearing on behalf of Chateau Development. This project's been in, in process for quite some time. Our first neighborhood meeting was held, I think, October twenty-ninth. At that meeting, the biggest issue to be discussed was the connection of a street called Bridal Lane, which is part of the acreage subdivision to the east with our project. And up to that point, we had been told by the Planning Department that we were expected to make that connection, and we had anticipated they would say that. And of course, none of the acreage neighbors wanted that connection to be made. The one unique characteristic of this project versus one you've been dealing with elsewhere in the city is that the connection from the east was never made all the way to the property line. There's two hundred seventy-five feet of road that didn't get built. And I have no, have no idea why not, but it wasn't. And the staff went back after that meeting and, and discussed it and decided, I think correctly, that it would be both unfair and maybe, probably illegal to make this developer pay for that much street outside the project area of our, of this project. And so the project was, the decision was made that that, that we will make a connection to the property line with a future extension of Bridal Lane. We will pave that all the way to the property line. And at such time as some property owners to the east decide they want to subdivide, then that's when the city will require construction of that connection. And so there will be connectivity at some point in the future when that happens. Now, of course, that wasn't the only issue. There were, this is a project of, of fifty-four acres and approximately eight hundred and sixty units. We are asking for a handful of waivers, which have all been granted but one, and we are not appealing the denial of that waiver of a sidewalk on one side of one of the private roadways. The key design elements that we've addressed in trying to put this project together included maximizing the amount of open space available. I, I don't know that it shows up well on the overhead, but I'll try. Make sure, make sure I get this oriented correctly. Can't make it any smaller. Can't make it any smaller. Can you see that all right? It's kind of, it's really bright on this screen. I'm not sure if we can-
We can see it.
There are a number of buildings on the site, some large, some small. We have a large building along Yankee Hill Road. We have three large buildings in this area. And then here, and then smaller buildings along the eastern property line. Those are, those are nine-unit buildings that are uh, twenty-three feet tall with flat roofs. But as you can see, we are going to maintain all the existing ponds on the site. With the exception of this one, it appears. We have to maintain or want, def- definitely want to maintain the natural drainage way that runs through the site. Um, when this pond, when the overflow runs, there, there's a small creek that runs down through here. And we want to maintain, keep, keep our buildings and parking out of that if we possibly can. And one of the ways we're doing that is using um, underground parking to limit the amount of surface parking. So the larger buildings are, are designed with underground parking to increase the amount of green space as well as to uh, limit the uh, surface area covered with concrete. We have requested a height, height waiver. It's a little bit hard to, to see this without putting up a, a little bit of a cross-section to show you the grade along this uh, property line. Oops. There it is. This is the east property line of the site. And along here, we have three abutting acreages along the entire length of this site. Um, the first one at the north is, is owned by some folks by the name of Bert. And if I can increase the size of this a little bit to give you a little better idea. The finished floor elevation of their home is estimated at thirteen twenty-one. The floor elevation of the nearest nine-plex is twelve ninety-five. So there is a significant reduction in the grade along here. We are going to be cutting down along here so that when you look out, if you lay down at floor level of the first floor of their house, you will look right over the top of the nearest building on, from their perspective. And the, the ones further down are, are even lower. Section B, which is, now I'm getting, I'll go back to this. There's a home owned by, some people by the name of Ditto. And their, their view through that cross-section. It's got a, I've got something in the middle of my screen. I'm not sure I'm, if that's showing up on yours or not.
We can see it.
Yeah, we can see it. Great.
It's um, I mean, we, we have a fifty-foot, minimum fifty-foot setback for all these buildings. And this building, as you can see, the, the, the line of sight from the main floor elevation is going to be right within, within a couple of feet of the top of that building. So you're going to look right out over the top of it. And again, the, the ones further away, the, the large building, which actually is fifty feet tall, will be three hundred and sixty-two feet away from the property line. And again, down even further, so that the top of that building is basically all you're going to see from that elevation. And finally, some folks by the name of Co- Cook own the third house, uh, and there, the cross-section was taken to the big building along Yankee Hill Road. And one uh, small building along their property line, again, the fifty-foot setback. And there'd be, they'll see maybe the top two or three feet of that building. And then as you get further away, about three hundred and eighty feet away, then you'll see the top of the larger building down in the, along Yankee Hill Road. Um, we've tried very hard to vary the height of these buildings to create some, some interest and some design uh, variation. We've also worked with each of our neighbors to come up with a, an individual grading plan for their property. The Bert's have agreed to a plan. Put up here and show you. Along the backside of their house, there will be, again, quite a bit of cut, but there's a big plum thicket in this area, which is to remain. Uh, there's a, there's a tree that's fallen on the existing chain-link fence that runs the entire boundary. We agreed to fix the fence, trim the tree, and get that cleaned up. We're going to take out a couple of fairly large cottonwood trees and some scrub cedar trees along here. And on their property, agreed to plant nine spruce trees, four, six feet tall, um, that will screen that area where we take out those, those cedar trees. They have agreed to withdraw their, their opposition to the project in a letter that's being submitted for the record. The Ditto's took a little different approach. They actually had a professional landscaper prepare a plan for them, which it's a little more difficult to see their house here, but they are, their house is going to, again, sit quite a bit above where the, the uh, nine-unit buildings are going to be. But on their side of the fence, we've agreed that they, we, we offered to install this landscape plan, which was prepared by Landmark Landscapes. And they've submitted us a, a, an estimated cost of that landscape plan at just over ten thousand dollars. And we offered to do that, um, but they were unwilling to, um, to sign an agreement that withdrew their opposition. The Cooks likewise have a, a landscape plan that was designed for them, by them, uh, to plant, I think it's fifty yew bushes along their property line on our side of the fence. And then down, further down to put in a, an earth berm that's going to be at least seven feet tall through here. Um, and in addition to that, we've eliminated one of the buildings that was previously shown on that uh, on that side of the, of project. Originally, our project showed two buildings next to their home. And now, we're going to have one. And we're going to have all these yews. They have, as you can see from this aerial photo, they have a, a, a fairly dense row of trees, and they've added to it since we announced this project. And they wanted some coverage in the lower areas along that property line, so the yews will do a good job of covering that. And again, they were unwilling to execute an agreement that withdrew their opposition. We talked about it this morning, uh, as to whether or not, uh, what, what we ought to do with the, the fact that we, we were unable to persuade them to, uh, to execute an agreement to withdraw their opposition. Um, and we basically decided that, you know, they, they felt very strongly that they wanted to come and, and still voice their opposition to uh, a project like this coming in next to their acreage area. We offered to do this, and we're going to stick to it. We're going to do it even though they didn't want to sign the agreement. So, we're going to do these plans. We're going to have to have, for example, we will have to have Ditto's permission to plant things on their property. Uh, but other than that, we can do the rest of it ourselves. I, my guess is that the Ditto's will not object to our doing that if this is approved. And so, uh, upon approval, we will proceed to uh, go ahead and make these landscape plans happen um, regardless of the uh, opposition. So, if there's any questions you have, I'd try to answer them. I'm, I'm running over time a little bit. I'm sorry.
Okay, Sandra?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I have a, a couple of questions. Um, first, it looks like you have, uh, you've, you've met the screening rules and gone way beyond what is necessary. But um, I would like to know, maybe this is curiosity, um, who has the responsibility of maintaining the landscaping that you've placed on their property?
Pro- landscaping that is placed on other people's property will be maintained by them.
Okay.
And that was, that's part of the understanding. Anything that's, obviously, anything that's on our side of the property line will be maintained by Chateau. Part of the difficulty is that there's a, there's an existing chain-link fence that runs the entire length of the east side of the golf course, and the entire south and west sides of the golf course, all the way around. Um, and so, we have, we intend to leave that fence in place. And uh, you know, getting back and forth to maintain anything on the other side of the fence, I think, is somewhat problematic as well as um, we really think that it'll be a lot better if, if we have, for example, on the Ditto plan, they have their own landscaper. Go ahead and do the plantings, have all the warranties that go with that go directly to them rather than through us. And so we're out of the middle of any, any disagreements about how they're planted, whether they survive, or any of that sort of thing. Um, and I think it'll, it'll work much better for both sides.
That sounds wise. And then my last question is the seven-foot berm that uh, you have agreed with the property owner next door. Has that also been reviewed by Watershed Management?
That specifically, no, I don't believe it has. Um, I think it's really just a matter of, I mean, we have an overall drainage plan that we have to comply with. Um, uh, Tim Gergen is sitting back there. I think he will tell you, if you ask him, that the construction of that berm will not affect the overall drainage of the site.
Both in the short and the long term?
Both short and long term, yes.
Thank you very much.
I mean, the, the reason for the berm is if you can visualize the, looking east as we are from our, from our property, the, the, the property not only comes, falls this direction, but it also falls to the south.
Right.
So, all of that drainage, regardless of that berm, is going to come to the south and west and, and go right around that berm.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I have one. Could you show us on the, one of the drawings that you have, where is that Bridal Road?
Oh, sure.
And then who pays for connecting that road in the future? Which, which developer is responsible?
This is um, this is the area along the eastern property line. And the, the forty-eighth street entrance comes off of Yankee Ho- Yankee Hill Road and, and goes to here. This is a roundabout that from here, this is, this is a private, private roadway that will then go to the west through our project, and then it will go east to our property line. This is Bridal Lane. And that two hundred seventy-five feet that is unbuilt runs from this property line to the east, where there's a, a cul-de-sac over here that serves the Ditto's and the Cooks. When someone besides, they want to subdivide their lo- their acreage lot, then there will be a, there will be a, somehow, that street is going to have to be built. Uh, that's, that's at least the, the intent of the planning and, and public works departments at this moment. Why it wasn't built, I don't know if it even shows. Yeah, it does. It does. This, this might show it a little easier. This is the Cook property. This is the Ditto property. This is, this area is called Country Acres South. And they, this road, there's a dedicated right-of-way that goes all the way to this property line. But the construction of the road was stopped right here at a cul-de-sac. And I'm not sure why, but it was. And so when s- when these properties re-subdivide, there will need to be an extension, not only, there, there'll be not only an extension of the road, but there'll be water and sewer that will need to come up in there too.
And then going back to the question of the road, whose responsibility is it to complete the connection of that road? On whose dime? Maybe on whose dime?
That connection be- between the existing road and the property line will be the responsibility of developers who redevelop this site.
Okay.
We are, we are building it on our side up to the property line.
Okay, terrific. Thank you. Richard?
Um, one difference, I think, between this and the other project is that the Country Acres South is not in the city limits. Is it, it is not annexed?
That's correct. It is.
So that is still county property at this point?
Uh, yes.
Or in the county? It's not in the city limits?
That's correct. And so, as, well, both Country Acres and Country Acres South are outside the city.
Still in the county?
Yes.
Correct. And then you said that that road, as it goes across there, and then it will come all the way across, is a private roadway and will stay a private roadway, or that goes through the Chateau Development from?
There will be a private roadway. This comes in here, goes to this roundabout, and goes all the way through over to what will be a public street, which will be an extension. I'm not sure what we're calling that. I think it's South Forty-fourth Street. Um, it will come over to there. The, the planning department wanted, they didn't, our first choice was to simply make these
Public streets?
driveways. We really didn't want to even make them private roadways. We wanted to make this a, a complex with driveways the way lots of large apartment complexes have them. And the, the thought was, this is maybe just a little too big for that. They wanted to have a, a full-width private roadway, sidewalks on both sides, and restricting some of the parking and so forth. Um, so that's, that's where we ended up with a private roadway running through rather than a driveway.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Hunsaker? Okay, great. Thank you very much. Would you like to go ahead and testify, or?
It gets hot under the mask. I don't know if you noticed. Stefan Gaspar, Chateau Development. Been managing Chateau since nineteen ninety-one. That makes it twenty-nine years. Usually Mark gives me a, a nice advertisement, so I do it for myself. We consistently voted the best apartment complex of Lincoln. Uh, we currently voted best of Lincoln by Lincoln Choice and also by a key of ours, uh, a survey. Um, I think we worked very hard with the neighbors. Uh, two things that Mark didn't mention is, um, on the first neighborhood meeting that we did, uh, Mr. Ditto requested that we turn the, the two buildings around. So he had a choice. He would, would prefer, you know, to see, I think, the garage side of the, of the building rather than uh, the backside of the building, so we did that. Uh, the second thing that we did, instead of doing pitch roof on a two-story building, uh, we agreed to do flat roofs. Okay? Thereby, uh, you know, reducing the height and, and, and giving them, uh, the visibility. The fact that, uh, they wouldn't agree to, um, a proposal that they gave us, you know, I, I don't know what to say to that. Okay, and I better keep my mouth shut too. Other than that, um, uh, obviously, this, this project is, is large. However, so is the acreage that we're building on. This is, you know, this is kind of our, the way we, um, manage our apartments. We only have two properties. We have one north on the corner of Cotton and Vine, the original Chateau La Fleur. And we have one south on, um, uh, Seventy-second and Van Dorn. And so our, our properties, our economies of scale, uh, you know, that's kind of my, my business model, is, is to keep them. But, you know, the density per acre is, is not any more than you see, um, anywhere else in, in, uh, in, in the city as far as, uh, any, any of the recent developments are, are made. And, uh, just like, um, uh, you know, our Chateau, uh, the original Chateau on, uh, between Cotton and Vine and Fifty-six and Holdridge, you know, there is quite a bit of green space on there. You know, it's a little hard to see on there, but, but the drainage way, those, those buildings are going to be quite far- You know, it's a little hard to see on there, but, but the drainage way, those, those buildings are going to be quite far apart. In addition, I wanted to increase the, the green space even more. So, I'm basically building on all the big buildings, I'm building underground parking. So, if you put the parking underneath the building, it costs you more money, but you also increase, you don't have as many parking, parking lots. So, that's also, you know, something that I, I wanted to do to make, make this, this, this project more appealing. And other than that, I think because of the, the number of acres, the actual density is, is, is not any bigger. And I think it's, it's going to be built in stages. So, there's not going to be, you know, 860 units and, you know, that I'm building all at once. It's probably going to be a, a 10-year project by, by the time everything is, everything is built. You know, and like I said, I've been here a long time, and I have a little bit of expertise, and I hope it all works. Any questions?
Any questions? So, Richard?
Well, I want to just thank you for continuing to have faith in Lincoln and its growth in Lincoln, to do such a big project and to do it right. So, appreciate it.
Thank you. And, you know, it's not easy to find a site that big in the city of Lincoln. I mean.
I have a question for you. Thank you for coming down. And also, we, we heard Mr. Hunsaker said that you are still committed, even though the two neighbors did not agree and withdraw their opposition. You are committed to doing the landscaping or paying for the landscaping on the neighbor's property and doing the landscaping that's on your property
Yes.
per their specifications?
Yes.
Okay. That's wonderful. Okay. Any other questions? Well, thank you very much for coming down. And we'll see if there's anyone else that would like to testify on this item?
Three.
Three people. Okay.
You guys go out the back.
Oh, yeah. Mr. Hunsaker? Okay. Could you exit these doors if you don't mind? We're just trying to keep our physical distancing.
But you may get, need a rebuttal, too.
Need arrows like the grocery store.
Yeah. So, you might be needed to call back for a rebuttal, so maybe go back to the other room. Thank you very much.
We need, um.
Yes.
Okay.
Before.
Yes, thank you.
Traffic control.
Traffic control.
That can be Roy. Your arms are longer.
My name is Lisa Cook. L.I.S.A.K.O.C.H. I live at 4801 Bridal Lane in Lincoln. And in the interest of time and to keep my neighbors safe, I am here representing 17 homeowners of Country Acres South. Our acreage neighborhood, like he said, is located directly east of the proposed development. And I would like to bring to your attention a few concerns we have regarding the Chateau at Yankee Hill. The first one is the Bridal Lane access. The desire to leave the 270-foot gap at Bridal Lane between the development and our neighborhood undeveloped is mutual between both parties and is presented as such by the developer. Our current neighborhood county road was asphalt paved in the 1990s by the homeowners. It was paved as a minimum-use road and is aging. Any use outside of the 17-home traffic will degrade it further and likely make it rapidly impassable. Additionally, paving that section would require the decommissioning and re-drilling of my water well, which lies within 20 feet of the sanitary septic, which would accompany that road. It's my understanding that a future connection with Fortieth Street is already planned at Granger Lane for this particular development. Country Acres South would like to request a written assurance by the city council that this easement will remain permanently undeveloped until such time as changes occur in Country Acres South that may require the linkage. The second issue is the size of the Chateau development. We feel it is excessive. The 860 apartment dwellings in this area is 16.5 dwellings per acre, which, according to the Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan adopted in 2016, this density is generally reserved for downtown areas, not suburban. The developer addressed this at the Planning Commission meeting by stating there are other pockets of this density within the area. That may be so, but not to this immense size. The developer is asking to put the population equivalent of Hebron, of Tecumseh, or of Syracuse directly west of my home. That is excessive. We ask for the dwelling count to be reduced. Finally, we have issues with the building heights. The developer is asking you to approve a variance to allow building heights of 65 feet. The buildings they are presenting are 50 feet. We feel even at 50 feet, that the height is still excessive for the neighborhood they are moving into, let alone if they increase those to 65 feet because you approved that height. We would ask that the city approve only the 50-foot height to prevent the developer from adding that 15 feet after the fact. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Ms. Cook?
Madam Chair.
Yes. Oh, Tammy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Ms. Cook, could you help me understand the water well that would have to be re-drilled? And why that would be so?
I'll just use this so we don't have to wait on it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so my, my home, is it on?
It'll come up.
Takes a minute.
Moment. Yep. There you go.
So, this is my home. My well to my home sits about right here. Okay. The Department of Health states that it has to be within, it has to be within 50 feet of, it cannot be within 50 feet of a sanitary sewer. So, my guess is, since the sanitary sewer is coming with the road up to that, to our, to that property line, that that sanitary sewer, if you, if, if Chateau was made to develop that road as well, that sanitary sewer would come with it. That then does not meet the Department of Health regulations with the 50-foot setback between my well and a sanitary sewer.
And so, you're anticipating that expense would become yours?
Well, I
You don't know?
I don't know.
We don't know yet. Okay.
I do not want that expense to become mine.
I understand. Okay.
It would, I, I, in my mind, it would be whoever put the road there.
Right.
It would be their expense.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other questions? Thank you very much for coming down. Appreciate it. Let's see, we have another person wanting to testify. And Ms. Cook will ask that you exit stage left.
My husband.
Oh, okay. Well, that's okay then. You can stay.
And go down together.
I'm Robert Cook. R.O.B.E.R.T.K.O.C.H. I live at 4801 Bridal Lane. I appreciate all the work you guys do, and especially during this COVID-19 time. Thank you, and thanks for letting me come and talk. I'm a pediatrician in Lincoln.
Could you turn that?
This way?
Upside down. There you go. Perfect. Perfect.
I'm a pediatrician in Lincoln, and, and I've been prior Army, and to me, process is very important. Everything in medicine, everything we do is, is, is important. I have two concerns today. First, on the January 8th Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission meeting, this was presented, and I feel that the Planning Commission used this data as a, as, as the basis of their approval of this. And it was, it was the staffers, it was Hunsaker, and then my turn. And then I did not get a chance to rebuttal, and I thought the staff would bring this up, that it's, it's, it's bad data, looking at it. Or maybe that Mr. Hunsaker would bring that up, and I wasn't afforded a chance to rebut just because of the process. So, basically, this is the drawing, the cross-section grading, and it was, it was incorrect and misleading. If you, if you see that it has basically, from one of the houses, if, if you lay down and look out, you will only see a little bit of roof. But that's on a 20-foot drop, and the grading plan is only a 10-foot drop from the Ditto's house. For us, part of it is not a drop, because they're, they're trying to level it out.
Would you repeat that one more time?
The, if you look at the, the, this was presented as the grading plan, and if you look here, you can see essentially the Ditto's house, and then it drops down 10 feet, drops down another 10 feet. And then, which, which is, is not true. It's only a 10-foot. It goes from essentially 1305 down to 1295, somewhere in there.
But then he, they stated that the other homes are at 1321. Is that not correct?
That's not correct. You can look at, so this is the Ditto's, and it's at 1310.
1310.
And it drops down. The base of that first building there is 1300.
But from the home to where it's tagged, is that 1310 and not 1321?
Correct.
So, that is level ground? That is completely level ground from the home?
It, it, it falls off a little bit. You're, you're right, but it's, it's, it's not 20 feet from the property line as, as this shows. And I brought that up to Mr. Hunsaker, and then he submitted a revised one. And, and there was another one, too, but.
Okay, so the, this is the stated, there you go. Yeah, okay. So, the stated house elevation of the Ditto's is 1317. The nine-plex will be 1300, making six feet visible. And the 124-plex elevation that he showed would make 18 feet visible to, for the Ditto's. On our property, our, they're saying, they're giving us seven feet of essentially where our first floor would be. So, our stated elevation on the new plan is 1307. The nine-plex elevation is 1291, making seven feet visible. And then, with the 164-plex that we're going to be looking at, we will see 20 feet of that 50-foot building. Does that help?
It does.
Yes.
Okay. My ADHD, ADHD's kicking in, so. Just, it was, the developer sent a letter to the Planning Commission explaining that error on January 14th. However, there was no reapproval process. It wasn't submitted back to the Planning Commission. Given the erroneous and misleading information that the Planning Commission was given at the time of approval, I would request that the project be resubmitted to the Planning Commission with the aggregate grading data for reapproval before submitting the project in its entirety to you. My second concern is in regards to the landscaping offer. So, once again, this is the process. The applicant had said that we had turned down their offer. Well, we turned down the offer because there was a nondisparagement clause that states that I can't, if there was anything wrong with the project, I couldn't meet and, with anybody in public. I can have a private conversation from now until the end of time, or my time. No social media, no media, and it basically, it was to silence us. And, and we appreciate them meeting with us and working with us on that. But to ask somebody to silence yourself in exchange for landscaping, when that was the Planning Commission's instruction to them was work with the neighboring landowners, I think is, is concerning. I felt that our, our silence was for sale in exchange for landscaping that was offered in front of the Planning Commission. I can only assume that this is not the first time that this type of exchange has occurred to secure a neighbor's silence at city council meetings, and we did not sign it. I would ask that, that the process be looked at and, and ask people, if you have a big developer come in and the individual landowner, if they don't read that contract. If, that I, I see your role as protecting not only building Lincoln, but protecting the individual landowners, too, from being silenced. You know, I, I, I just felt I needed to stand up and say, this is the way things were done. And we didn't, we didn't sign it because we feel people have a right to, to speak. As far as the second building on, that would face us, that was not our, we were happy with whatever they were going to build because we figured they would build it. And it was, we were told by them that they were going to put extra units in the bigger buildings and then not have to do the second building by us. So, it would just be one building on our west border. Any questions?
Are there any questions for Mr. Cook? I have a couple, Mr. Cook. So, is it your understanding that the larger building that is set back, like, what, 360 feet from your property line, would only be 50 feet in, tall, 50 feet tall and not 65 feet tall?
That's, that's according, that's my understanding, that it would be. But they have the ability, if it's approved at this, to go 65 with, with, with their application.
With their application. And you felt that what they submitted to the Planning Commission showed incorrect elevations throughout the whole, and that was not corrected?
Correct. And I don't, and my question for you, did you receive? Because I, I don't, I'm not party to that. But if the Planning Commission met and then rediscussed this, then I, I have no point. But it was my understanding they didn't, that it would just went forward with the, with the bad data.
The other question I have for you, so, working with the developer, they removed, they had planned to have two buildings by you, and they removed one?
Yes.
And then, did, you didn't necessarily give your authorization or approval on the landscaping plan, but is that something that you had discussed with them? And I mean, would that, they had made a commitment that they were going to go
Yeah.
forward with the landscaping?
We did not know that until today. We met with them on, it was a week ago, this last Thursday, so the 24th. And then we received a, an email from them on the 31st saying that, here's some attachments. The attachment did not come at that time, but it, basically, it had the nondisparagement clause in it. And we decided that, that, I, I would hate to be talking to somebody in my practice, and, and it, word gets back that I said something about the development, and they could sue me. And, and I just don't think that's right.
But going back to the, the landscaping that they offered and that they said they would do, no matter what you said today,
Yeah.
or what you can say in the future, but they would still do the landscaping?
And that's great.
Okay. Did anyone else have any questions for Mr. Cook?
Not for Mr. Cook, but I think I have some questions for staff.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. And exit stage, your stage left or stage right?
Stage right.
It's stage right.
Stage right. Okay. Thank you.
Always.
It's always from, it's always about the actor. Okay.
Yes.
All right. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Council. My name is Max Rodenburg. M.A.X.R.O.D.E.N.B.U.R.G. with the law firm of Rembold-Ludke, LLP. Here today representing the Country Acres South Homeowners Association. Address of Rembold-Ludke's 1128 Lincoln Mall, Suite 300, 68508. Address of Rembold-Ludke's 1128 Lincoln Mall, Suite 300, 68508. Today, I'd simply like to reiterate and reemphasize a couple of the points made before me by Dr. and Mrs. Cook. Those points primarily relate to the process of this particular development that took place before the planning commission and now, now here today. You heard Dr. Cook's frustration about some of the things that were presented in front of the planning commission. And so just to, to provide a little bit of clarity, as, as Mr. Cook indicated, this is the, this is the document that was shown to the planning commission and reemphasized multiple times throughout their initial and then rebuttal testimony, saying, look, you can see right over these buildings, there's not going to be a problem. Well, out in the hallway afterwards, we had a discussion, at which point counsel for Chateau said, well, maybe that wasn't entirely accurate. So our response was, well, you know, what is accurate? And so to that, to Mr. Hunsiger's credit, he sent a letter to the planning commission saying, you know, to, just to clear the air, here is the accurate depiction of the grading, and it was a much, you know, more detailed grading map. But to Dr. Cook's point, to our knowledge, that was not resubmitted to the planning commission in any form or fashion. And so there's some frustration there as to whether, you know, false or misleading information was presented to the planning commission during that meeting. Second, there's, I think you heard it from the Cooks, and I can, I can echo that for the Ditto's as well, the other landowners, that they were appreciative of the offer to continue to do the landscaping anyway. I think, I speak for everybody when I say the hesitancy to sign that agreement wasn't necessarily to withdraw their opposition to the project. It was the more or less gag order language that was in place in that agreement. I mean, it was a pretty standard agreement until you get to Section 5, which, you know, again, in exchange for the landscaping, to which the landowners kind of thought that they were already entitled, based on the testimony at the planning commission, they were, they would have to agree to not only withdraw their opposition in writing, but also to refrain from further opposing or even talking about the project in a disparaging manner in any way. So, our clients are looking at this and saying, gosh, if the construction's going bad or something else is going wrong, we don't want to have a gag order against us, basically, where we can't, you know, continue to seek assistance from public entities or, or just, you know, talk with others about it. So those are kind of two of the main issues that I just wanted to reemphasize about this process. And I appreciate, appreciate all of your time today, and thank you for continuing to meet and, and listen to the public during this crazy time. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, otherwise, we'll see you soon.
Okay. Yes, Benny?
No, go ahead. Thank you, Madam Chair. Push the button, there we are. I understand what you're, I'm a little fuzzy.
Mm-hmm.
Planning commission saw some documents, there was a conversation, there might have been an whoops moment, there was a letter sent by counsel for the developer. The copies we received were not amended, is that what you're saying?
I'm, I'm not aware, I'm not quite sure in front of me what copies you guys received today. The, the, it's my understanding that the copies that were presented by Mr. Hunsiger today, earlier today, those grading maps, that showed not only, not only that, but the three, you know, from the, the...
A, B, and C.
Those were, had been corrected.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I just had a quick question. There's two sub, there's two associations out there?
That's correct.
Country Acres and Country Acres South. Does Country Acres come in, weighed in on this at all?
I don't represent Country Acres, just Country Acres South, so I can't really speak on their behalf.
And as I see, Bridal Lane goes all the way to 70th Street, all the way through the other subdivisions? And at what point, I'm wondering, is this going to become part of the city and be annexed? Okay?
Yeah.
I'm sure that's not high on their list either, right now, association, but, they are outside the city limits at this point.
Any other questions for Mr. Rodenberg? I do have one. Can you tell me, in the, the large building there, what is the elevation they're calling out for that building? Is it 50 feet or is it 65 feet?
That's showing a 50-foot building.
50-foot building?
Yes.
And is that what they, do you know, did this revised drawing get to the planning commission, or you're not certain?
This is the, this is the original misleading drawing that shows, look, if you just are standing on the Ditto's property, you can see right over this 50-foot building. What it doesn't take into account is what if that building's 65-foot tall? And also, what if I'm looking out from the Cook's property? Because their property's at lower elevation.
Okay. I'm not, I'm sorry, you, you don't have a chance to have another comment? Okay, so, who has revised drawings?
I think we've, we'll see those today.
I think we need to talk to planning.
I thought that's, Max, correct me if I'm wrong, but you said that's the drawing that Mr. Hunsinger showed us?
No.
That is correct?
This is, this is the drawing that was presented at, at the planning commission meeting on January 14th.
Incorrect. And then the drawing that Mr. Hunsinger showed us, does it have an elevation of 65 feet? Or we don't know?
Those, those just had the 50 feet.
It'll come back in a few minutes in rebuttal.
Yeah, I'm sure they'll clear it up, and I'm sure they'll present the, the corrected versions.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Rodenberg?
I, I just, I think I have a lot of questions for staff, and I may have a question for legal.
Okay.
And I think, yeah, just to, just to conclude, I think that the, the recommendation, or the request on, on our behalf at this point in time would be to, you know, if we are going to improve the project, make sure that the landscaping is a condition. But preferably, send it back to, to planning commission to make sure that they're looking at it with accurate information and, and that we're, we've got the process shored up.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Is there someone else that would like to testify on this item? No? Steve, are you gonna, is there, no, are you going to be answering staff questions, and so please come on down?
I think I broke the pen.
Okay.
I couldn't write my name.
All right. I'm sure Teresa has another pen.
I'll get with you.
Okay. I guess, well, Sandra, you had some questions?
I do, I have a couple of...
Steve Hendrickson with the planning department.
Yay.
Hi, Steve. I have a couple of questions. Let's start with, let's start with the roads agreement, the roads development, or lack of development agreement. Who generated, what was this, what was, who generated this roads agreement?
So the separate agreement that goes along is actually working with both Chateau on the north side, and also with Lincoln Federal Savings on the south side. And so that's the separate amendment to, we've had various annexation agreements out here. And so we've been working on that for a number of months, because it also includes Lincoln On the Move sales tax funds. But in both of the cases, both the developer, Chateau on the north side, and Lincoln Federal on the south, are upfronting a substantial amount of money so that Yankee Hill Road can get improved from 40th to 48th. And then Lincoln Federal is then, in a separate agreement, looking to improve it, continued from 48th, either over to 56th Street, or at least east to 52nd Street. And so we've been working with them on that agreement to specify how much money is each side putting forward, but it'll make sure that the road gets improved prior to the opening of the apartments on the north side.
Okay, so I was looking through that agreement and kept seeing Yankee Hill Road, which I was expecting to see. But then Ms. Cook talked about a road agreement to not build Bridal Lane, and I wanted to know if that was an agreement that has been discussed with planning? It seems like an odd request to ask for a written letter attesting to the city's, I don't know, not building a road.
Yes, that was a request was made to the city actually months ago.
Okay.
And it is really not something that's appropriate for a city council to approve. Something that tries to bind a future city council to some conditions. What we had said in our emails back to them was that this development will build it up to the edge of their development. There'll be the 270-foot gap that is public right of way, it's in the county today. Someday in the future, this area will be annexed. I can't say if that'll be sometime next year, or two years, or three years, or five years, when that would be, but at some point, it's becoming quite clear that this area would be annexed. Annexation would just change it from the county jurisdiction to the city. Even with annexation, we wouldn't necessarily go out and improve it. So what they talked about is a circumstance, let's say, one of the adjacent homes decides they would like to subdivide, the first step would actually be to rezone the property. And you'd really be looking at a rezoning then of a larger area, and that's a very big step, that, you know, the city council to change it to a zoning district that would allow smaller ones. So certainly at that point, you're looking at doing smaller lots on any of these larger lots. Then getting that last 270-foot paved would start to make sense. And that would be a subdivision requirement that the adjacent road be paved. So it would be that future development that's going to plot five or six or however many lots, that would be bearing the cost of that additional road. That is, I will note, one scenario. Another scenario might be, years down the road, these residents would like the idea of connecting over to whatever development has now happened between 40th and 44th Street, there's some commercial, there's something else there, and the residents think that would be a, a good thing. So they might petition to the city, if it was annexed at that point, to have the city pay for that cost. I'm not sure that that would ever happen, seems unlikely at this chance, but I, I don't want to say that that is never an option either, because it legally is, is an option as well.
Okay. Thank you very much for that, because I, I wanted to understand that request, it seemed unusual. So let's go to density. Tell me about the zoning for the Chateau development and the density limitations of the parameters on density?
Sure.
And then tell me what you believe this project does.
So it is about 16 dwelling units per acre, which is very typical of a suburban apartment complex. So most of the suburban apartment complexes are 16 dwelling units, or most time 20 or more dwelling units an acre. Sometimes they'd be 15 or so, but for an apartment density, three stories, that is very typical. So what I think is often being referenced in the comp plan is that when you look at the square mile, from 40th to 56th, from Yankee Hill Road to the north, that square mile, oh, the average overall is still probably in the three-dwelling unit range, particularly when you have acreages next door. So the comp plan is really referring to an overall density. An overall density downtown is 16 dwelling units or above, probably even higher. But in a suburban area, it's still typically three to five overall, but with lots of pockets of 20 or 25 dwelling units per acre in the apartment area.
Okay, thank you. And then, let's talk about process. So the, the diagrams may have been inaccurate, and if they were corrected, were those corrected diagrams shared with the planning commission?
Oh, absolutely. So this was approved, and within a week, Mr. Hunsiger sent in a letter, it was addressed to the planning commission. It is available online with all of the other letters we received on this item, because we don't, in our summary report, include every letter and things we have, we have the links to those. So yes, no, he very much stated, hold it, what I thought was accurate for all three of these, I didn't represent correctly, I presented the correct information, and we did not have any of our planning commission members contact us and say, oh, that was it, that was the only thing that was important to me, and I really think we should revote on this. I, I think what they were looking at is the fact that these apartments, the higher den, higher height ones, 50 to 65 feet, are over 275 feet away from the property line. They were looking at the fact that they were going to do landscaping, they were looking at that, yes, there was a change in, in topography, as well as there wasn't at this point going to be any kind of connection. So I think there was lots of things they were looking at, particularly that the closest buildings were being limited to two-story. Because in any development, you could have had a three-story house next door, single family or single-family attached, so they were, I think it was all of those factors put together. And so we did not have any planning commission members contact us and say, as a result of this letter, do you think we should vote again? Should we have this sent back to us or not?
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions? Benny?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to go fixate on that just for a second. So part of the process is the planning commission is told, whoops, and they, they're given an opportunity to claw it back and rebook it?
Correct. They could have at their next meeting, which was two weeks later, and the letter was sent in between, at their meeting in, two weeks from their last one, they could have voted to reconsider, because they felt like this was a, a important enough factor that they thought, whoop, I would have really changed my mind. And what I was saying is that none of the planning commission members contacted us to say, this was the single factor, and because of it, I, I'd really like to, to reconsider this. They might have reconsidered and had the same conclusion, but none of them felt that it was important enough to contact us and start the dialogue to say, I'd, I'd really like to revote on this. I, and I'll have to say, it is quite unusual for somebody to send us a, a letter correcting it. We get lots of testimony at planning commission meetings, a lot of it is people's opinions, and if we sat and looked in every single one, we might find lots of other things that one might say is not quite factually true. So I, I do appreciate that this was pointed out very quickly, that, nope, what I misstated, misspoke something at the hearing, but none of them felt that that was material enough that they should have a vote to reconsider.
And the documents we received were the amended, corrected documents?
Yes, Mr. Hunsiger's letter is, is in there with all the other letters and things that we have online.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions?
Just one, other one, quick one. Why did you decide not to do Bridal Lane as a city street? I mean, it comes up and then...
Oh, you mean between...
Between 44th and 40th.
Yes. So that section in between, that was really more of a compromise. It would have made more sense as a public street, because ultimately, if there's ever a connection to the east, you would have city traffic going through their apartment complex. But with large commercial developments, like a, a large retail, et cetera, often you have private roadways that are available to the public. And they offered that, well, we, we acknowledge that even though we might have some cross-traffic going through here, we're willing to accept that, we'd rather it be a private roadway. So I would say it was a compromise. It's public on either side, the part in between is private, it gives them a little more flexibility.
Can it be a public street at a later date?
Would it be built by...
Uh, no.
It could never be a public street at a later date?
Well, because what we have said with other private roadways, that first take a bunch of, a bunch of advantages by having the private roadway, and then want to try to switch back to public, is that, hold it, you, you just ate all the cookies in the cookie jar, you can't now change it back. So no, in theory, they could ask for it, but it's one that, no, once it's private, it, it remains private, the city is not interested in taking it over. That would be our position at least.
Can I ask one more question? On the roundabout, on the Bridal Lane roundabout?
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Cook said that if that stubout happened to the property line, that she would be required to re-drill her well? That it would no longer meet the requirements of the health department? One, do you have the same opinion? And two, can we ask that they not build the stub all the way to the property line today? I mean, I'm, I'm a little confused and concerned about...
Actually, I think what the comment really was more that if Bridal Lane was continued from this line further east, that she thought the road would require the sewer to come along with it.
Okay.
And so when we talked with Lincoln Transportation and Utilities about this, it was like, no, we could have just do the paving. Lincoln Transportation and Utilities, Wastewater, agreed that, yes, a city sewer line needs to be a certain space away from a, a well. But extending the road didn't necessarily mean you had to do the sewer line with it. And they're very aware that, where the well is, they appreciate them pointing that out to us. Some point in the future, if this area gets annexed, and then you start to have property owners request the sewer line, their well, their sewer goes bad, then potentially, the relocation of the well, or hooking them up to city water, might be a part of the cost of a project to extend city sewer to this area. That typically would come with somebody, at least one person requesting it. So LT was very familiar, we appreciated that, because often, we don't know where somebody's private well is. But they felt very confident that that could be addressed in the future, and really wouldn't hold up any of the things that are a part of the development plan.
Any other questions? I have a couple. Can you tell me, Steve, on the corrected drawings that were sent to the planning commission, what is the elevation of the largest building depicted in the drawing, the corrected drawings they provided the planning commissioners?
I, I would say that's probably a better question for Mr. Hunsiger, who's, because there's three different elevations that go, go through that.
Well, I'm just talking about the large building. What is the elevation of that large building? Is it at 50 feet or is it at 60 feet in the drawings that they presented to the planning commissioners?
Oh, in the drawings to the planning commission?
Yeah.
Hold on just a moment.
Okay. Okay.
This is the first elevation that was shown from the letter that was sent to the planning commission, and it shows the building height as 50 feet tall.
And in the corrected letter?
This, I'm sorry, this is the corrected letter.
And the elevation of the homes, I don't know if that's, the Cook's home is at the lower elevation, what is the number that it's supposed to be at? Is it like 1321, 1307?
Well, each of the three homes is at a different elevation.
Okay.
I'd have to look up to get an approximate elevation, but I do agree, I think Mr. Hanziker agreed as well, the Cook's home is the most even between what is being developed to the west and their current elevation as well.
Okay. So what is the intention of the developer? Is he going to build a 50-foot larger building or 65?
He said they were building a 50-foot building, and they agreed not to build a pitched roof, and went with a flat roof to keep it at 50 feet, when he was testifying.
Well, that doesn't, no, that's not the answer to my question. They're not building a pitched roof, but that wouldn't add necessarily 15 feet to go...
It could on a building, it potentially could. So the application is still before you, would allow them the flexibility to go above 50, up to 65 feet. I will note, it has a requirement that it be the minimum, I think it's 275 feet away from the east property line. So yes, when they look out, if it was built at 65 feet tall, it would still be nearly a football field away, so that visual height, as it would appear to you, would be quite diminished by the fact that if you're standing at the property line, it's almost 300 feet away from their homes. It would be even more in terms of distance, as well as there would be landscaping in between as well. So it was all those factors, but as it's today, they're still requesting 65 feet.
So am I correct in understanding the intention of the developer is to build a three-story building? Is that correct or no?
I would say it's better for that to ask Mr. Hanziker. I can just let you know, the application still allows up to 65 feet. One thing we have learned over time is when you draw a plan at 50, and it looks like it's good at 50, when it's finally done and it's measured by the city staff and taking an elevation, it can be 52, it can be 53. It doesn't mean it's any different than what was shown, it's just, there's a lot of measurements, particularly on a very large building, to come up with building height. It's quite complicated with a large building that has over topography. I mean, if you ask, what is the height of Gateway, for instance, that is the single most complicated building to figure out, what is the height of it, because it is so large.
What do you want it to be?
So one of the residents, or the Cooks, had a question and requests that they make that condition in the documents, that they will move forward with the landscaping that was offered to them. Is that necessary to do that, or...
Well, that would be up to you as to, as part of, if you decide to approve the change of zone, do you also likewise want to amend it to take it from 65 feet down to a lesser height? And again, if you're interested in doing that, I might suggest something like 55 at least would give them a little flexibility to work within that 50 that they intend at least, but could have a lot of complications with it. But that would be in the change of zone, the building height.
I also want to, I also want to make certain that we all understand that there's two different building heights being talked about, because two different types of buildings. The one, I thought, was clearly stated that the one closest to the property line was the one where they took the gable off and made that a flat roof. But they had not said that they had taken the gable off of the taller building further away from the line.
I think that's a good question for the applicant as to, for the larger building, which is further away, what would be their intention. But you are correct, the eastern building has a limitation already in the PUD that can be no more than two stories.
Right. And they've already agreed flat.
And Tammy?
So, thank you, Madam Chair. Steve, I'd like to go back to Councilwoman Washington's question about the well, because I think, I'm not clear on your response. I think to her and your point, it just reiterates Ms. Cook's question and concern, whether it's LTU saying, it's okay, for now, we can move forward with the project, it's not going to happen unless Bridal Lane is continued. But I think to the point of the neighbors and Ms. Cook, she's saying someday it could happen. And so how do you answer that? Instead of, it's okay for now, we can move the project forward, and that's, she doesn't need a new well, because that's the intent. But let's talk about the future, because it could happen, and you alluded to that. So how do we answer that for Ms. Cook?
Correct. So the sewer may be built up to the eastern edge, but staying at least 50 feet away. So in the future, it would be somebody really to the east, one of her or one of her neighbors, who requests the sewer. So the sewer is then going to be constructed, and it would come within 50 feet. And what I was saying is that at that time, the city would then look to work with that property owner to say, listen, we need to extend the sewer. One option is they put it on the north side of the road, they zigzag, that has some maintenance costs and headaches. So LTU might say instead, it makes it more sense for us to come and work with you to relocate the well, that has costs, put that in the project cost of extending the sewer. And so it's a cost, just like obtaining an easement or additional grading, it's a cost if you have to relocate somebody's well. I'm not saying that's exactly what would happen, but that's certainly an option, along with you zigzag the sewer to the other side of the street, which is not perfect, but that's another engineering option.
And I think what I heard Ms. Cook say was, this would happen not as a result of anyone requesting a sewer. It happens because we, the city, are extending that road, and someday the sewer would have to move. And her point was, the Nebraska Department of Human Health and Human Services would say, now you're within that 50 feet, and so you have to move your sewer. Nobody's, you know, nobody wants to go to that expense of moving their sewer if they're not forced to.
Right.
So that's where I'm trying to get those...
Right. And what I was saying is, you could extend the pavement and not have to extend the sewer. She was incorrect. That is a typical thing, to have water and sewer and the street paving and the sidewalks all done at the same time, but it wouldn't have to be. You could just extend the street paving, not extend the sewer. Conversely, you could also extend the sewer and not extend the street paving. You just have people who want the sewer, they've been annexed, and so you extend the sewer and then have to work with them on the well location.
Thank you.
Great. Everybody good? All right. I guess we'll have a rebuttal with Mr. Hanziger, and...
Is he out there?
I'll be over there.
He was looking in the back door.
Yeah. The lights were out out there now.
I just, we're always required to have all these connections, and now they're saying that we don't need a connection.
I know.
Isn't it great? Maybe planning will bend on everything now.
I don't think so.
I'm getting goofy.
Madam Chair, members of the council, I'm sorry to have caused the confusion over these cross-sections, but it was, the exhibit that was shown at the planning commission was accurate. My description of it is what was erroneous. This exhibit is totally accurate.
Hold on.
Zoom out.
I can see three lovely lines.
There we go. Okay.
See it, right?
Yeah. Perfect.
Okay. This is the exhibit that was shown at the, at the planning commission. It is completely accurate. Now, what it doesn't show you is the line of the cross-section that it takes. And it, the mistake that I made was not recognizing that 4800 Bridal Lane is the Ditto's house and not the Cook's house. Cook's house is 4801 Bridal Lane. So when I put this up, I was, I was talking about it as if it was the Cook's house, and it wasn't. It was the Ditto's house. And here's why. That cross-section runs from the Ditto's home through this building down to this building. So it doesn't look like that when you put it on, in this view, but that's the cross-section that was presented. It's accurate, but my description of it was wrong, which is what I tried to correct with my letter to the planning commission. And then this exhibit, which has the cross-sections running directly for all three houses to the nearest tallest building. Now, with respect to the Burt property, obviously, there's really no issue there. The Ditto's property, again, it's, that tall building is 362 feet away from the property line. So it's over a, it's a block and a third, basically, away from their property line. And it, I mean, there will be some of the top of that 50-foot building that will be visible, but we've never had a requirement that we make these buildings invisible. I mean, we are doing as much as we can to mitigate whatever impact there is of having large buildings over there, and we're doing a lot, but we can't, we can't make them disappear. With respect to the Cooks, that building is 378 feet away from the property line. And where we get into this issue of the height waiver, really doesn't have anything to do with the design of the building so much as it has to do with the grade of the ground around the building. Remember, we're putting parking underneath these apartments. There is a, there is a change of grade from east to west. It drops along here, and it's not until you get to about in here, which is like 680 feet away from the property line, where a measurement using the way the codes people measure height will exceed 50 feet. It's because the grade, I can't remember exactly the definition of height in the zoning code, but it is something like from the average elevation of the land within a certain distance of the building to the top of that parapet is the height. Okay? So as that grade drops from west to east, to get us our entrance into the parking garage, then the height, as measured by codes, goes up. But we're going another 300 feet away to the west before that happens.
Mark, let me talk to that a little bit. So two things. First of all, when you look, the whole ground is not flat by any means. If anybody has ever been out there, it's just wonderful hilly contours. So the problem that you have is, when you show one cross-section with the building, and then you move it 15 feet over, it's going to be a different one. And then you already have the three different levels of elevation of the, of the Cooks, the Ditto's, and the Burt's houses. Then at the first planning meeting, we showed, you know, one cross-section. Now, if you, you can impossibly show every single cross-section from every angle that you had here on the, on the previous line, because, you know, what if, say, you want to go instead from here to here, you want to go see what the cross-section is from here to here? What is the cross-section from here to here? And we can do that ad infinitum, and, you know, we just try, try to show a representation that because the level is so contoured, that in some respects, you know, some of those buildings are disappear, you know, to a certain extent. Okay? As far, as far as, once we go to the front, and I don't know where we have the, have the other drawn, this particular building along Yankee Hill, that faces Yankee Hill, that's the first building that we're going to build, is a combination of two buildings that are connected, you know, by two stories on top. But there is a 10, there's a 10-foot grade drop, and the buildings are offsetting like this. And by the way, I want to think, everybody talks about a three-story building, now we're building four-story buildings, just like CFP builds, like across from Southeast Community College, and like there's, you know, like a whole bunch of apartment developments that now go four stories. So when you have a four-story building, and you have a grade drop of 10 foot, because you're going to, basically, the fourth floor of the lower building is the third floor of the upper building, that's why we were requesting the 60-foot height limitation, because then the question is, when, where are you going to measure the height of the building? Now, in the old days, and I'm familiar with that too, in order to get the height of the building, all you needed to do is have, have the level of an entrance to the building, and that becomes your height. Now, that has gone away. Okay? So now we're dealing with a, I don't know how long that building is, do we know this, Mark? How long this whole building is?
If this is 378, that building is probably close to 500.
Yeah. 500-feet building, you know, with an offset, you know, where the, where the furthest west, that's now probably more like two football field away from the east property line, you know, is going to, is going to step down. And then the question that I have, and that one my architect says, look, if we're then off within three or five foot because of whatever else, you know, I'd rather be safe than sorry, and that's, that's why we're asking for 65-foot height limit, height waiver, which is relatively common for any kind of four-story apartment development, just like Mr. Hendrickson said. So I just wanted to make sure, it's not three stories, it's a four-story building, okay? And we have in that building offsetting it, so the four stories down here are like that. But the grade is, you know, the grade drop is 10 feet.
So in the drawings that you've provided, does that indicator show it's 50 feet tall? A four-story building indicates that it's 50 feet tall?
At this location, it's showing 50.
Correct. That's, and that's, that answers my question, because I wanted to know, what is the height of that building there at that point and juncture, which is what they're going to be visually impacted by right there at that point?
And this is, and this is true...
And as it goes further away, and as we know, the elevations keep dipping down as you go further from them, it's just, what is that point of, they're going to see?
And the question...
And is the roof going to be flat?
Yes. The roof is going to be flat, and right here, you have, you have the grade drop, but also the underground garage for this building is entered on this side, because the grade goes down from east to west, so how are you going to get into the underground garage? You're not going to get into the underground garage on this side of the building, you're going to get into the underground garage from that side of the building. So that side of the building, if you go on this corner, this building isn't going to be 50 feet high anymore, it's going to be larger. Otherwise, you're not going to get into the underground garage. And then once you go to this side of the building, where the entrance for this underground garage is, you run into the same issue.
Mm-hmm.
So my architect said, you know, just to be on the safe side, you know, we're going to go with 65, because if for whatever reason is, you know, we're going to have nine-foot ceilings in all the apartments, then you put a foot or, you know, foot and a half in between is a floor, you know, then you need the roof and stuff, and if something just doesn't go just quite right, you know, then we end up taking a whole floor of, of the whole apartment, just because we're, we're dealing with a, with a 50-foot height limitation. That's why we were asking for 65-foot, just to be on the safe side, and because of this condition on this particular building, that's off 10 foot, and then on top of it, you still have the entrance from the underground garage.
Okay. Are there any further questions? Benny?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, gentlemen, and I appreciate that explanation. The Cooks testified that there was some concern about their ability to talk about the project tied to the landscaping. Would you like to address that?
It was, we started this process, I want to make, I want to back up for just a second and say, the idea of meeting with each of these property owners to individually design their landscape screen was not a planning commission directive, it came from us. We said, we want to meet with each of those people and design something that they're going to, they're going to be able to live with. What we asked for in return for spending considerable dollars, I mean, the Ditto landscape plan alone is over $10,000. What we asked them to do was to execute an agreement that says they would withdraw their opposition to the project and not publicly bash us at a, at a public hearing after we've agreed to spend all this money. The Burt's thought that was reasonable and signed the agreement.
The Burt's thought that was reasonable and signed the agreement, and you have their letter withdrawing their opposition. The other two decided they would prefer to be able to come and say to you the things they said today, which they have a right to do. And when we talked about that, knowing that they were not willing to sign the agreements, it just seemed like, you know, maybe it's just not worth it. Maybe we ought to just say, okay, we're going to do it anyway because Chateau has always done a great job of landscaping their projects. They have been good neighbors to every neighborhood they're in, and they didn't want, they don't want to get started off on the wrong foot with these folks either. So, we're going to go ahead and do the landscaping that we, that they asked us to do, that they designed, sitting at the table with us saying, this is what we want, and we'll do that regardless. It's unfortunate that that became an issue. I guess we didn't, we didn't see it as a big deal, but apparently, it was to them. And so, you know, we're just going to say, never mind, we'll go ahead and do it anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Are there any other questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I guess as a follow-up, Mr. Hunsaker to Councilman Schob's question about that. Is that a technique or a clause or gag order you use with a lot often? Or was this, that was described by Mr. Rodenberg that way, not my words, the other counsel?
I didn't invent the idea, okay? It's been around a long time.
I understand that. We've worked together a long time, and I've-
Very kinds of, any kind of settlement negotiations and agreements. I had, I had one of my associates review that agreement, and it was modified somewhat. Probably included a little more insurance lawyer language than I would have, but-
I understand.
You know, it's not uncommon to ask people to refrain from making public statements that are disparaging of your project if you've gone the extra mile to do something favorable for that person.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you both very much.
This way, right?
Exit stage right. All right. Is there anyone? Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay.
All right, that concludes our public hearing. Our resolutions on first reading are items six A through C. Our pending list are items seven A through G. Does someone wish to move adjournment?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Would like to say three things to everybody in the city. Be careful out there.
Mr. Blue?
Golden rule, and I move for adjournment.
Suck it. Moved to adjourn by Christensen, seconded by Ward. We want everyone to please be safe. Please keep your physical distancing and wear a mask whenever you think it's appropriate. Please call the roll.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.